April 11, 2023 to order at 6:03 PM. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Vice Mayor Mervin, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pray. Father God, I want to thank and praise you, oh God, for another day, God, that you allowed us to be here. Father God, we pray, God, that you would be with us, oh God, as we start to conduct the business of our city. God, we ask you, oh God, look upon our commissioners, oh God, our mayors, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Look upon our residents, oh God. And God, we ask you, God, to shine down on this city of Pahokee. And God, we give your name to honor the glory and the praise, in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, unbound, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bolden.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Perez.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk. Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, staff. And most importantly, thank our residents for being here to participate and listen in on our regular scheduled City Commission meeting of Tuesday, April 11, 2023. We was off doing our last regular scheduled meeting. It's nice to be back. Some of our Commissioners and staff went to Washington, DC. As they say, if you're not at the table, you're part of the dinner. So we want to make sure that we're at the table as often as we can. With that being said, we're going to proceed with our meeting as outlined in our agenda. The first order of business is the additions, if any, emergency, on emergency basis of the City Manager. City Manager, at this time, do we have any add-ons?
None, sir.
Thank you, sir. In addition to that, we entertain any deletions of the agenda. Do we have any deletions?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor Bab, make a motion that we would approve the agenda as presented.
My second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Bolden for the adoption and acceptance of the agenda as presented. Call for questions. Hearing none. You ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion passed by unanimous vote. With, I think Commissioner Gonzalez is currently not here, so he's absent at this time. Next, we have public comments, public service announcement, presentation, and proclamation. This is a section of the agenda that allows the, for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes for your comments. Public comments cards should be completed and returned to the City Clerk. When you're called to the podium, please approach the podium and give your name and address. City Clerk, at this time, do we have any public service cards or public service comments?
Yes, sir. First, Mr. Richard Brown.
Richard Brown, 303 Carissa Drive. Mayor, Commissioners, prior to y'all doing your business of the city and of their agenda, I would like for y'all to make, it needs to be made perfectly clear, crystal clear, that Robert Love, who is not a resident of the city of Pahokee, neither a registered voter of the city of Pahokee, continues to disrupt the meetings that after the second warning, that the chairperson would ice him to be removed from the chambers. And if need be, PBSO will assist in that removal. With that being said, anyone in the audience that's disrupting the city of, the business of the city or the agenda, after their second warning, even if it's the mayor's brother, that they be iced by the chairperson to be removed from this chamber. And if need be, PBSO will help to escort them out. And with that being said, Mayor Bab, Commissioners, our elected officials, if you're being disrupted during the business of the city, that you be iced after the second warning to be removed, that you remove yourself from this chamber. And if need be, PBSO will also do that. And with that being said, I'm hoping that you all will get your house back in order because the residents and the viewers are sick and tired of seeing this craziness. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Cards complete.
Ms. Annie Ifield?
Good evening, Commission. I'm Annie Ifield, Project Director for Healthier Glades. Here, it's always a pleasure to be here to speak before the Commission. I'm here to give you guys some updates of events that are happening in your community so that you're aware of. Just to let you know, we've been off, we've been hosting a three-part series about healthy homes. We did our first one back in February, and then next Tuesday, April 18th, we'll be doing our Part II series. And it's going to be addressing issues about the effective use of cleaning products and also address issues about asthma as we're kicking off asthma awareness month. And so that will be held April 18th at 6:00 PM at Pahokee Parks and Rec in the Resource Room. I give each of you is the blue flyer, so if you can please share that with the community, I greatly appreciate it. The second thing I want to talk about is there's an event that's happening in May, the Youth Explosion. This is an opportunity for youth. They held this last year at St. John Missionary Baptist Church. They're doing the second one this year at New Bethel in Belgrade. This is an opportunity for youth performers, whether they can sing, dance, do poems. They can compete for prizes. The first place prize is $1,000, second place is $750, and third place is $500. The event is going to be held May 21st at New Bethel. I do have applications. I did give the Commissioners applications, but I will leave some in the back if you know of any youth groups that are interested in performing. And then lastly, just want to let you know, next month, May, is Get Your Green On campaign as we promote mental health awareness and trauma-informed care. As you know, our communities have been hit very hard recently with tragedies, and there's some things that we need to address as a community. So Healthier Glades will be promoting a month-long campaign of education, awareness, and resources for the community at large, representing all three cities of Belgrade, South Bay, and Pahokee. I will be coming back in May for the proclamation that we'll be doing for this, with the city of Pahokee as well as Belgrade and South Bay. And then I will have more details on the activities that will be hosted. So with that, I say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lolita?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Lolita Solvers. I reside at 290 Parkview Court. I just wanted to get up here and say that I appreciate the work that's been done out of, out of East Lake Village. Y'all did a great job. I appreciate that, that letting me know that my voice are being heard. And I also wanted to ask about affordable housing in Pahokee. We've got a lot of peoples out here that's like the peoples in Parker Building that have to move. I think, I heard them say they have to move by, what, tomorrow or something like that? So where are they, where are they going? Where, where, where they going? Is there any type of way y'all can find some land or something to build like affordable house? I know y'all building the condos, and I don't think that those are going to be very affordable for the people that stand in Pahokee for, you know about the amount of money they are, we are making on the Glades. So is y'all thinking about something like affordable housing for low-income peoples? Because I know that housing authority is, that's a housing project, and the rent is, they don't go up on the rent sky-high for these peoples. And that's not, that's not affordable anymore to me. I don't see where they're affordable anymore.
We realize that housing is our number, one of our number-one priorities, and we're going to be doing everything we can to try to attract affordable houses in our community. I mean, we're knocking on a lot of doors. We're talking to a lot of legislators and developers who may be interested in, in developing in Pahokee. So that's going to be one of our top, very top priorities.
Yeah, because I'm just saying, because my heart just goes out for those peoples that, you know, that have to move out those type of environments that's not livable. And I was thinking like, okay, people don't, we own the Glades. They only have cane fields and rust, you know, fast food restaurants in Belgrade that people can work for. And it's not affordable for these people to live in, you know, right here in these high paying areas. So I guess that was a concern for me about the affordable house, something low-income for the residents of Pahokee.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Next, we'll have various presentation. The first presentation is PBSO quarterly crime stats. And I'll just have our City Manager give a brief introduction for Lieutenant Company.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to introduce Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office Lieutenant Avi. And he's going to give us our quarterly report for this year.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. It's a pleasure to speak with all of you. I know he just introduced me, but I think I've met some people in this room. I've met pretty much everybody on the panel here. My name's Adam Avi. I'm a Lieutenant for the Sheriff's Office. And my current assignment is I am the Executive Officer for District 511 and 12, 12 being the city of Pahokee. And as he said, I'm here to address quarterly crime stats. So the first thing that I'll go ahead and address is violent crime, and then I'll kind of get on to some other topics from there. The first one is, I'll get right into it. We've had two shootings, one homicide. One of the cases is definitely ongoing. However, I would like to address, unincorporated Palm Beach County, just outside the city of Pahokee, over the weekend, we had a deputy that was shot at. Without releasing too many details, our homicide division is working the case. And if you have any information whatsoever about this case, please go to Palm Beach County Crime Stopper. It's 1-800-458-TIPS. You can remain anonymous. And if the information that you provide needs to arrest, then you'll be able to collect that reward. Right now, like I said, it stands at $13,000. On March 4th, we had an individual, or excuse me, we had a shooting involving two individuals. Two individuals got into a fight. One introduced a gun. The firearm discharged. Luckily, nobody was hit, so at least there's that. Road Patrol made an arrest in that case, so that has been taken care of. It's an isolated incident between two people. It was a fight over a chair, believe it or not. One, one of these cases involves somebody shooting into the air. And as a result of that, the projectile came down through the window of somebody's car. So just a reminder, because we're coming up to, you know, San Juan de Mayo, 4th of July, so on and so forth. We have a lot of events where, you know, people like to bring out firearms. Remember, what goes up must come down. So, you know, in this case, you know, it was somebody's window, but what we don't want, obviously, is that projectile to come down and be somebody's child or somebody's loved one. And I think that's the main concern, is public, public safety. And... Obviously, everybody knows about the shooting that occurred in Paget. I cannot release any details on that at this time as it's still ongoing. I would be going outside the scope if I did that. But our Violent Crimes Homicide Unit, and I believe our Gang Unit as well, is working this case actively. Next thing I'm going to address is property crimes. Hot topic. Take your valuables out of your vehicles, especially at night, and lock your doors. Burglaries right now, especially vehicle burglaries, are up 200%. And a lot, and in the overwhelming majority of these cases, especially when I was reading reports earlier today, they are unlocked vehicles. You have people that they'll go around and they'll check door handles. Because remember, folks, it's easier for someone to pull on a door handle where it's quiet. They can go into the car. Nobody notices anything. They take what they need, and then they leave. With breaking glass, it kind of, you know, for one, it attracts attention. And two, it takes them just a little bit longer to get into the car, especially depending on the kind of window that the vehicle has, if it's got tint on it, and so on and so forth. So another thing, too. If you have, one residential burglary report that I read, somebody stole a bicycle from under a carport. So if you have any valuables that are in plain view as somebody's passing by your house, take that into consideration, or something that is about you, no matter what it may be. It may be a good idea to put these items in a shed or even store them in your home so people don't know what you have. A lot of these crimes are crimes of opportunity. So just take that into account. Park closures. I know a lot of you have had questions about park closures. I know there's been some buzz on social media about this. The reason that the parks were closed through Easter weekend was, I want to put, first thing I want to put to bed is it had nothing to do with turn-up Sundays. I know that that's what some people were thinking, that the Sheriff's Office was trying to take away. That was not the intention. There are things beyond the purview that, as a result of that event, that caused some public and safe, public safety concerns for us. So therefore, we got with the city and we expressed our concern, and that's why they were closed through Easter weekend. Now, the parks are back open, as you all know, but we are still actively monitoring the intelligence that we had prior because that has not been completely put to bed yet. And if there are some other issues, then we will reassess, and we'll, sure, we'll get with the city. And if an action is taken, the public will have notice of that. Last but not least, traffic enforcement. I know that, and there may have been a couple in this room that brought up Barfield Highway in the past. Barfield Highway has now been closed at certain sections. And I drove down there the other day. I know that if I were to go down there at a high rate of speed, at least now, it would probably tear my car apart. I know that at least if you're even still driving at a slow rate of speed, the dust is still kicking up in the air. But I want everyone to know, we have been putting deputies out there, at least monitoring it. It's been a lot slower ever since there's been that closure. What's the street that closes on? I can't remember. Is it E-7th? All the way almost to the end of Barfield, right where the nursing home is. So at least that closure's helped us a little bit. We've also put resources off of Bacon Point Road, Southwest 14th. And we've also dedicated resources just north of that to the school because we've had some complaints about vehicles passing during school hours. So we're going to continue to monitor that. Unfortunately, as a whole, this is not specific to the city of Pahokee. PBSO's Western Region, for whatever reason, we are up in fatalities, traffic fatalities this year. Six out of the seven cases for the most recent document that I have from vehicle homicide were from the Glades. So to address that issue, we are putting together an ops plan. Sergeant Berger is going to be the author of that. And we are looking to getting some resources out here. Because like I said, it's not specific to the city of Pahokee. I've gotten complaints about 880, which all of you know, if you've been out here for a while, 880 is not the greatest road, and people will still do 100 miles an hour down 880. But I would like to point out that the causes of these crashes are not specific to speed. They are multi, they're multi-pronged, essentially. We're having a lot of different issues with people driving, has to do with fog, visibility, commercial vehicle involvement in some of these. So, you know, just keep that in mind. But we are working on addressing these issues. Since I've been a Lieutenant, as we get the VHI monthly stats, I don't think I've seen one yet where the West Region was up that high. So it just, I don't know if this is a fluke, but either way, we are addressing it on our end. So just, you know, have that in mind. I mean, at the end of the day, if any of you have any suggestions or comments about either traffic enforcement or some of the topics I discussed, like I said, I cannot have a Q and A on the park closures and that intel. I cannot do that because I cannot release any information on that. However, if any of you have any questions, feel free. We are here for the, for the rest of the meeting. I can't, I can't address your question right now, but if you want to do it afterwards, I, you know, see what we can look at. Well, it's for the community as a whole, because you have to understand that we are partners with the community. And my standpoint is, we need you all just as much as we need us. At the end of the day, we can't be affected without the community's help and support. So that's what we look for. Like I said, we're here for the rest of the meeting. So if anybody has any comments, suggestions, questions, whether it be the Commissioner or anybody in the audience, we'll be happy to try to help you all out with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing Dwayne Denard as Principal of the Year, City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Congratulating, a proclamation congratulating Dwayne Denard for the 2023 Principal of the Year. Whereas, Dwayne Denard, the 2023 Principal of the Year, has a vision for Pahokee Middle Senior High School, and that is to see the campus as an comparable school dedicated to preparing all students to be socially accountable, lifelong learners, who are primed for college and careers in a globally competitive world. And whereas, through his leadership and partnerships with the business and philanthropic community, his school provides multiple opportunities for all students to engage in high-quality learning experiences in, in addition to receiving the guidance they need to pursue their college and career goals. And whereas, Mr. Denard has truly revolutionized the culture of Pahokee Middle Senior High School since he assumed his post in 2016. Under his stewardship, the robotics program has earned numerous awards from being acknowledged by then-Senator Nelson for reaching the state finals in its debut year to garnering the approval of NASA scientists worldwide for its innovative resolution of a concern hindering space exploration. And whereas, Pahokee Middle Senior High School's achievements under Mr. Denard's leadership include, but are not limited to, the number of IB diplomas rose from a mere zero in prior years to 43; the passing of AICE exams, they grew from 0 to 120; and the class of 2022 etched its name in the record books with a 100% graduation rate during the pandemic. Now therefore, I Keith W. Bab, Jr., Mayor of the city of Pahokee, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby recognize and congratulate Dwayne Denard on his stellar accomplishments as a 2023 Senior, 2023 Principal of the Year. In official recognition, whereof I here to set my hand and seal, cause the seal of Pahokee to be affixed to this 11th day of April, 2023, and it's signed Keith W. Bab, Jr., Mayor of the city of Pahokee, Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, and Commissioners Derrick Bolden, Commissioner Gonzalez, and Commissioner Perez.
Thank you, City Attorney, and also congratulations to Principal Denard. City Commission? Would you join on the floor? We'll go ahead and take the vote. Listen, Commissioners.
You got to vote for a proclamation.
Let's go ahead and vote on the acceptance of the proclamation. City Commission, I entertain a motion for the acceptance of the proclamation on behalf of the Pocahontas City Commission and congratulating Principal Dwayne Denard.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Gonzalez. Call for questions. Hearing none. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion passed by unanimous, City. Principal Denard, on behalf of the Pocahontas City Commission, I am Mayor and great City of Pahokee. On behalf of Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, Commissioner Derrick Bolden, Commissioner Sarah Perez, Commissioner Warren Gonzalez, and our City Manager, and our tire, City Staff, we congratulate you on an outstanding job that you're doing at Pahokee High School being Principal of the Year. I mean, you have put in a lot of hard work, but I know, as you're aware, you don't do it on your own. Your staff have done an outstanding job in assisting you and educating our students. And when we talk to developers and we talk to people who want to come to Pahokee, one of the first thing they want to know other than try, how good is your school? What are you producing? Are we going to have a strong workforce? So we feel comfortable with you at the hand, that all of those questions is a resounding yes. So again, congratulate you on this award. Principal Denard, please take this opportunity to say a few words.
the commission, because we still can't do it without you guys. Also, we'd like, uh, present you with a token that all of our teachers received in our celebration of the 100%. So, we want to make sure that everybody, uh, open the shirt.
Ms. Angela Adams, also we are very grateful for you.
Thank you.
Very nice, very nice.
Citizens of Pahokee, I just want you guys to know that we got great news this morning, and we do, our students are doing wonderful things throughout, uh, Palm Beach County, throughout the state, and throughout the nation. This morning, we had a, uh, meeting with the IB organization, and they praised, and they talked so much about Pahokee for what we're doing with our IB kids being on track. Not only diplomas, but we having, 90% of the kids are leaving with, uh, college credits. There, some of the kids are not doing diploma, but they're getting college credit that'll make it cheaper on your pockets. Um, also, last year, we had 10 kids graduate going to college as juniors. So, that's something to be thankful about. We also have, as we were talking about robotics, uh, we had a meeting today. We're sending those seven kids that solved the problem for NASA about astronauts developing kidney stones in space, they're going to Washington this summer. Uh, we are raising the money. Uh, it's a cost of 15,000. We have raised now 7,000 so far, and we're trying to make sure that they get over. It's a NASA internship for all seven of those students, and when they get over to Seattle, Washington, University of Washington is going to offer every single one of them a full ride scholarship.
Wow, damn.
So, we do have some great things going, and as you guys already know, Mr. Larnford's son have really set a new precedent. So, we don't, you know, growing up out here too, we always talk about football, football, football. But you could play football, and you could go to Ivy League, that's what.
And again, congratulations on behalf of the Pocahonti City Commission. Job well done. Our next proclamation is to congratulate Natasha Blake, the new branch manager at PNC. Very, very proud of her. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proclamation congratulating Natasha Blake, the branch manager of PNC Bank. Whereas, Natasha Blake was born and raised in Pahokee, Florida, and whereas, she graduated from Pahokee Middle Senior High School in 2005, and whereas, in 2006, Ms. Blake began her career journey at PNC as a teller, and simultaneously attended Palm Beach Atlantic University where she received her degree in business management. And whereas, Ms. Blake was afforded the opportunity to serve in the role of banker and has recently been promoted to branch manager at the Pahokee PNC Bank Branch. Now therefore, I Keith W. Bab, Jr., Mayor of the City of Pahokee, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby recognize and congratulate Natasha, Natasha Blake on her no, new position to branch manager. In official recognition, whereof I here to set my hand and cause the seal of Pahokee to be affixed to this 11th day of April, 2023. It is signed Mayor Keith W. Bab, Jr., Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioners Derrick Bolden, Commissioner Gonzalez, and Commissioner Perez.
Thank you, City Attorney. At this time, I entertain a motion for the acceptance and of the proclamation.
May I move that we accept the proclamation of Natasha Blake as branch manager?
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Perez. All in favor? Call for questions. Hearing none. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Commission, would you join me on the floor to congratulate Natasha Blake? We have five awards this afternoon. We have five commissioners, so each of us will be presented. But on behalf of the Pocahonti City Commission, as Mayor of the Great City of Pahokee, on behalf of Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioner Derrick Bolden, Commissioner Sarah Perez, Commissioner Warren Gonzalez, along with our city manager Rodney Lucas, and our entire city staff, we want to congratulate you, Natasha. And this time, I give this to Vice Mayor Mervin to actually do the official presentation.
Natasha, Natasha. Again, as the mayor said, we want to thank you, and we appreciate you. We congratulate you as being the branch manager, from not succeeding the first African-American branch manager of PNC Bank Brands in Pahokee. Congratulations.
And the congratulations, if I would be able to say a few words.
Well, I won't say, I won't say much, but just want to thank everyone and let them know that we are located here to service the community. So, everyone, welcome to stop by. You have questions on your finances, stop by, and we have answers.
Next, we have a presentation of the Business of the Month, which is the Muk Tavern, and at this time, City Attorney.
This, uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, is the Business of the Month, a presentation, the, this certificate is awarded to Muk Tavern at 190 North Lake Avenue, Pahokee, Florida. The recognition is of outstanding service to the community. It is presented this 11th day of April, 2023, and, um, by Mayor Keith W. Bab, Jr., and, um, Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioners Derrick Bolden, Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, Commissioner Sarah Perez, and also the City Attorney, I mean, I'm sorry, City Manager, Rodney Lucas. Thank you.
Thank you. City Commission, having heard the award presentation and certificate read, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I move that we will accept the Business of the Month, Muk Tavern.
Second.
They don't have to vote on it.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin.
I have no vote.
You have a vote on this one? Okay.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Gonzalez for the acceptance of the Business of the Month presented to Muk Tavern. Call for questions. Hearing none. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed by unanimous decision. At this time, Commissioner, would you join me down so I can, we can present the certificate to the Muk Tavern for Business of the Month? Mr. Thompson, and your manager, come forth. Muk Tavern, what can we say? I won't be saying the, uh, presentation, but I will say this, as the Mayor of the Great City of Pahokee, Florida, he given great honor to present this certificate to Muk Tavern for Business of the Month. NFL legends in our community, thank you for all that you do to make our community a great success. And at this time, I would present this certificate to Commissioner Derrick Bolden to officially present the certificate to the Muk Tavern.
On behalf of the City Commission, uh, first one, thank you guys. I know it was a long, hard fight for you guys, and I thank you for the perseverance. I thank you for not giving up. I thank you for overcoming all that you've overcome in order to establish Muk Tavern as a city of order. Thank you.
First, would first off, we got to just say, thank, thank, thank the Lord, Bob, for
having us all here today. But second, we want to thank you guys, man. When you five guys work together, great things can happen. We appreciate y'all. You know what I'm saying? Y'all played a big role in this, and we thank y'all, each and one of y'all. Thank y'all. Um, and thank you guys to the community. Uh, we can't make it happen without you guys.
That's right.
Uh, just coming out, the support have been massive. Um, let's keep doing it. Let's keep showing people that we can do it. We had so many dollars, uh, they got, make it to January, and we doing it. Let's keep doing it. It's ours, it's by, it's by us, for us. I mean, all the way from the top. It's all Muk City people. It's all us. So, let's keep representing, showing that we know how to take care of our own, and, you know, we got a place of our own now. So, it's for us, by us. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Free crowded burgers for everybody.
Again, congratulations. Our next presentation would be the Mayor's Golden Nail and Hammer Award.
You missed one. The, um, the Miller Investment Group.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's, it's two of them.
The Golden Nail Award presented to the Miller Investment Group, City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the Mayor's Gold Nail and Hammer Award, and it's presented to Miller's Investment Group at 354 Rat, Rarden Avenue, Pahokee, Florida, and it is in recognition of commercial renovation and beautification. It is presented this 11th day of April, 2023, by Mayor Keith W. Bab, Jr., Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioners Derrick Bolden, Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, Commissioner Sarah Perez, and City Manager Rodney D. Lucas.
Thank you, City Attorney. At this time, City Commission, what is your pleasure on acknowledging and approving this certificate of appreciation?
So, we do have to vote on it? Well, Mayor, I will, um, forgot what you supposed to even say now. I make a motion that we will accept the, uh, the presentation for the Miller Investment Group for the Mayor's Gold Nail and Hammer Award.
My second. It is then moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Bolden for the acceptance of the Mayor's Gold Nail and Hammer Award presented to the Miller Investment Call for questions. Hearing none. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Representative from the Miller, would you come down, and would the City Commission also come down? We, we, we talk about a need for housing in apartments and single-family homes. Well, the Miller Investment Group, uh, took the courage and commitment to build and renovate houses here in Pahokee. Uh, they spent over $100,000. I don't know that, I don't know if I told you, but I know it was more than $100,000 in renovating that property. So, we want to congratulate them and present them with this certificate. So, on behalf of the Pocahonti City Commission, as self as Mayor, Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioner Derrick Bolden, Commissioner Sarah Perez, Commissioner Warren Gonzalez, and our city manager Rodney Lucas, and our entire city staff, and our entire residents. We need housing. You provided. We so grateful for that. And at this time, I would give this to Commissioner Perez to present to the Miller Group for you.
Well, at this time, I want to congratulate, and to thank you for bringing so much needed, uh, housing in the Pahokee area. And if you got money, there's no problem. So, there's more need. So, congratulations. Thank you. If you guys already learned everything this week, alright.
And would you please take your honor of the living and say a few words?
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys, because I wouldn't have been able to do it without the support of the City of Pahokee, because I had a lot of questions from start to finish, and every time I came up to the office, they asked my question, and they helped me, point me in the right direction. So, this is all really thanks to you guys, and because of you guys, you guys now have a place to stay. I do have more projects that I am looking at, but in time, we'll see how that works out. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next presentation is another Mayor's Golden Nail and Hammer Award presented for a residential.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, Vice Mayor Commissioners, this is the Mayor's Golden Hammer Award presented to Lydia Castle. She is located at 164 Adams Place, Florida, and I'm assuming that's Pahokee, Pahokee, Florida. And this is in recognition of home renovations and beautification. It is presented this 11th day of April, 2023, and it is presented by Mayor Keith Bab, Keith W. Bab, Jr., Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, Commissioners Derrick Bolden, Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, Commissioner Sarah Perez, and City Manager Rodney D. Lucas.
Thank you. City Commission, at this time, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, well, first of all, we need to make a correction for the record. I think the address is wrong. I think it should have gone East Main instead of 164 Adams Place. So, we make that correction.
2481 East Main.
2481?
2481.
2481.
And with that, um...
So, that, that would be corrected by the clerk for the record.
So, with that, Mayor, um...
It should be, yes, East Main.
I move that we would accept the Mayor Gold Nail and Hammer Award with the correction of the address to Lydia Caso.
My second. It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote roll call? Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Would you please join me in presenting the award?
The Mayor's Gold Nail and Hammer Award is presented to both Business and Residential for those who do substantial improvement to their property. And, uh, this individual has done a lot of work to their residence to make it beautiful. And we certainly appreciate that they're valuable on their own, and to have some ripple effect throughout the neighborhood. So we so appreciate it. So at this time, on behalf of the Pahokee City Commission, Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, Commissioner Derek Bolden, Commissioner Sarah Perez, Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, alongside City Manager Rodney Lucas, we thank you for your efforts in beautifying and making Pahokee look beautiful as well as your own residence. Present this certificate to Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, who would then present it to you on behalf of the Pahokee City Commission.
Well, I'm on Lydia Caso on my license with kids.
Yes.
I know life has been tough for you, and you're a strong and I'm very proud of you to come about. You raised a young son. You know, you put time and effort into your family to fix your home. You set a very good example.
Thank you so much.
Very proud. You know, we have a simple, um, this partnership.
And you promptly update your address and get that right. Thank you so much.
I want to say good evening to everyone present tonight. And I want to send a special thanks to the Mayor of Pahokee. Uh, City Commissioners, um, thank you for the award. This means a lot to me. I've lived all my life here in Pahokee, and I'm a Pahokee High School graduate. And I've been at Pahokee High School for 30 years. I worked there. So I've been here all my life. Pahokee's my home, and I, I love it. I wouldn't trade it for anything else. Pahokee's a diamond. We can do so much. And I know we will go, we are going to do a lot here. We just have to work together and fight it through. I love you guys and thank you and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for those who may be interested on how you may be able to win a Mayor Gold Nail Hammer and Nail Award, we look at permits being pulled that give us an indication that there is some work being done on that residence or that business, and that give us that, uh, lead weight to be able to say this is something well-deserving. So just in the future. Now, next, we will move to our Consent Agenda, which consists of the March 14, 2023 Regular Meeting Minutes. If there are no objections, we will continue to keep this on our Consent Agenda item and won't have to pull it unless someone sees a need to pull it for discussion. Having heard none, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, move that we would accept the Consent Agenda, March 14, 2023, Regular Meeting Minutes.
My second. It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly is seconded by Commissioner Bolden for the accepting and adopting of the March 14, 2023 Regular Minutes Meeting. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote roll call? Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have all business, the discussion of existing activities or previously held events, if any. None, sir. Okay. I'll just speak on two real quick. Uh, first is the I Love Pahokee Day that was held this Saturday. I think it was a great event, well-attended. We thank all of our residents for coming out and participating in the I Love Pahokee, uh, Day. Uh, special thanks to Hefty Glaze and Bridges of Pahokee, also all of our various vendors and the, our community partners. Uh, we look forward to hosting this event next year. I think it would be bigger and better. This event was really a big event. Had lots of vendors, had lots of prizes, had lots of, uh, food and activity for all. So again, thank you, and it was a great success. The other event was the, uh, Homeless Coalition Mayor's Ball. Attended all zones Saturday. That was a great event. Uh, the majority of our City Commission and some of our staff was able to attend. It raises money for the homeless, uh, in Palm Beach County. So again, those were two very important events and very successful events. Thank you. Next, we have public hearings or ordinances, if any. We don't have any public hearings, hearing or ordinances. Uh, next, we have two resolutions. First resolution is Resolution 2023-15. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the City Manager to execute grant agreements between qualified applicants and the City of Pahokee for the city's minor home repair program, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation of this resolution?
Yes, sir. It is with great pride that the City of Pahokee had received $3.1 million, and we're looking forward to allocating, um... Seven. Just hold on one second, Mayor. We're looking at allocating a total of $129,882 to 27 recipients, uh, who have put in applications with us, Mayor, for minor home repair. See Exhibit A, which is right behind the resolution in your pack. It is combined effort to spend the city's allocation funds responsibly. The city elected officials establish an advisory committee, meetings, workshops, and town halls to share thoughts and suggestions as to what city offered funds should be allocated. Uh, the budget, uh, amount here, uh, was $200,000, and we're spending, uh, or awarding $129,882. It's 60% of that, which is $77,229.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, having heard the Resolution 2023-15 properly read into the minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by our City Manager, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, move that we would accept Resolution 2023-15.
My second. It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden for the adoption of Resolution 2023-15. Call for questions.
Yes, a hard question. There's 27, 27 names. You got 27 families, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
And the total is 129,882?
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're extending, we're advancing 60%, which is $77,229.20. $77,929,000. Yes, sir. Sorry about that. Thank you.
So the funds requested is the total amount they're going to get?
I didn't.
The amount requested is the amount they're going to get?
They're going to get it in two parts, ma'am. So we're going to advance 60% so that they can contract with the, uh, their choice of vendor, and then start getting the work done. And then we're going to inspect it. Permits are going to be pulled, paid for. And then, uh, without having to come back to the commission, when their person's done, we are paid in that right-hand column, that balance, that $51,952.80.
And since the total amount, the total amount was allocated was $200,000, that mean we'll be continuing this. We're going to be extending the time period for those who, uh, need minor some repair or to continue to apply for it to re-reach the amount of...
Yes.
The $200,000.
Yes, and then also I have consideration that I'm going to ask moving forward for a minute.
I heard Commissioner, Vice Mayor Mervin saying no.
Because that's not what they said. If I'm not mistaken, just correct me. Um, I thought that they had up until a time period to qualify and to put the application. I think that's why they extended the time to, I think, two or three weeks. So, um, I don't know if they, you all, is, so my question, like, is you extended another period? Or is there more applicants that you have that need to be, that hasn't been qualified yet?
There's more applicants in, uh, if I may, Ms. Peggy Boulay-Washington.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. So, uh, just to clarify, the application process was open for 30 days. Upon the last day of the, the closing of the application process, those applicants that, uh, their applications were approved to be able to go through the process are the applicants that will go into the second batch for approval. However, um, I will say that we have about 70 applicants. The program did very well. Um, towards the last leg of the, uh, opening, uh, application period, we got a lot of applicants in. So this next batch that's coming to you for approval would be that last batch of applicants that were approved. So this batch here is the batch that's, um, uh, we're sending, we are submitting to you for approval. And then we will go through the process as Mr. Lucas explained. Inspections, pictures, contractors do the work, and then funds are released.
So we're not sending out any more applications because the application's already been received?
Yes, ma'am.
They're just the first one that's been approved, these first 27?
Yeah.
We have about 70 applicants.
My thought, and I, I have no problem with that, but my thought would be, even if this application process on this particular, uh, funding allocation has been, uh, expired, if we have a part of money, say we, uh, had $200,000 budgeted, and you have, I'm just using the figure, 150 that was spent, and you have $50,000 left, it would be my recommendation that we would open that back up to allow others that didn't have an opportunity. And some people, when I say didn't have, we got seniors that had difficulty getting the two quotes, calling folks and they didn't show up. Calling one and they wasn't eligible, wasn't, had certain criterias met to be a vendor. So we don't want to give the impression that we're eagerly trying to cut it off. That's the case if the monies have been expended. That should be the case. But if there's still money available in that category, you know, I think we should have an opportunity or the resident should have an opportunity to continue to apply to that money as a spending. That's just my, my thoughts on that, but...
I, I have a question. Are these, these people, um, you've already, you've already made a home inspection. You got pictures, they've been approved. So these are all a go.
So to, just to clarify the Mayor's point, and then I'll go to your point, Commissioner. So with this group, we still have an, a second batch that has already gone through the vetting process and that we would need to provide funds for. Now, we have enough funds for almost half of that second batch, because as I stated, we have about 70 applicants that are approved as well. But we, we would technically have about, we would have enough money for a little over 40% of that number, if that. So we still have, we still need money to cover the rest. That, that would be, um, that would be the hurdle we would have to get past. I mean, if you want to open it for discussion...
No, no, you're missing it. I'm not saying open it, especially now that I'm aware, and I didn't, wasn't questioning that. But if, I was just saying, if there was still available money in that particular category, then it should, just my opinion. It should be open. But certainly, I'm not trying to say reopen it when you don't even have money for the remaining group that you have application for. So I think we're on the same page. I just wanted to make sure that we wasn't advocating, you know, trying to cut it off after 30 days when we still possibly had additional funds in that particular line item. That's all I'm trying to make.
And, thank you. And so to answer your question, Commissioner Perez, so these applicants have all of their required documents, and, um, their estimates were provided by vetted contractors, who are contractors that are part of our city's, um, approved list of vendors. And those vendors that were not part of the approved list of vendors went through the process to become approved, uh, vendors for the city. Now, once we are able to get the funds allocated, then those contractors can start the work. And then we would go, we initially go in to re-verify, um, take pictures, inspect, so on. Then the work, after the work is done, the homeowner is incumbent upon the homeowner to contact us and let us know the work is done within the allotted amount of time that we give. At that point, we would go out, re-inspect the work to make sure the work has been completed and, um, lines up with what the, um, what they've, uh, spent and, and acts for. And then we would then disperse the other, uh, remaining portion of their, um, allotment.
What amount of time are you giving for the residents to contact the city to say that the work has been done?
I believe it's three to five business days.
Why, why are we going...
To do the work?
No, no, it's done. To let us know that it's done. But most of the time, they, they, they've been keeping in touch with us. We've been having a pretty good relationship with our, um, with our residents, and they let us know when things are happening. So we've, we've kept a pretty good relationship with our residents. And also in our department, we will be doing our due diligence to follow up, check on them periodically to make sure that the work is been, is being completed and has been completed.
I think at the minimum, could at least extend two weeks, 14 days. I'm not sure why we're so in a rush to say, you know, you have a certain deadline. A lot of these folks are elderly. I'm not saying they are not capable of doing it, but some of them, you know, I, I just don't want their parents that will just maybe weed in folks out if they don't, saying they may not get their second half because they didn't contact the city within the seven days. That's not...
But to your point, Mr. Mayor, we, we wouldn't just arbitrarily not give them the funds. We would, as I stated before, we check with... we check with our residents, and our residents have been really good with keeping in touch with us. So we would make sure, um, that we do our due diligence in making sure that the work has been done, it's been completed, or they're on track to, to complete the work.
Any additional questions from the commission?
So in other words, there's no penalty for them not meeting the three to five days we're going to work with them?
I, I, yes. I don't foresee there being a penalty. We've, we've kept a really good relationship with our residents.
In addition to questions?
For the record, do you need to call name of the, uh, I don't, mostly they put the, for the record, they call the resident's name on record to know that, that was on record of who receiving.
It's always, it's part of the. It's already a part of the resolution.
Okay. That's good. I'm good with it. Oh, when would they, when would they start receiving the fund?
So, you, so once you've approved it, then we would use the, the same timeline, the three to, three to seven, five to seven business days to contact them.
So by next week, they should have their first lumps, huh?
By next week, they should know that they've been approved, and then we would have it go through finance. And then, once it goes through finance, finance would then begin the process of cutting the checks to the vendors, to the contractors.
No, it goes to the homeowners.
I mean, to the homeowner, excuse me, but it's to the contractor. So it goes to the homeowner, but it's made out to the contractor.
No. We make the checks out to the homeowner.
And they pay.
Period.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
That's not what we, what we.
That's what they're saying, making it to the contractor.
Yeah, that's not what we voted on. We voted on making it to the contractor.
It's to the.
So, when South Bay did this, since we wanna have a debate, when I spoke with Mr. Camel, he makes it to the homeowner. The homeowner has the contract with the vendor. The contract's not with the city. It's with the individual, please. We did not put the language in that says that it is made out to the contractor. In addition to questions? You ready for a vote?
So as of now, this money's going straight to the individual itself, themselves, and it's supposed to be to the contractor.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd allow us to look at the legislation and make sure that it's consistent, whatever happens is consistent with what the legislation says. Thank you.
I support that.
We ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Should, should we vote before she looks that up, or?
No, it's, it's whatever you all, whatever you all have already voted on. Um, the clerk may be able to pull up the legislation, but you all have already voted on where it goes as part of the program. And so, and so, that is a part. So what, whatever you voted on, that's what's gonna happen. That's what's supposed to happen, because you've already voted on that part. Tonight, it's just the names of the people who would be, um, but the program itself, you voted on the program.
Okay, but this is in reference to the payout, though, right?
That's a part of the program that you've already voted on. So, what, what I'm suggesting is, whatever that legislation says is where the money would go.
So like, it's like she says, if we vote on this right now?
You can vote on this. This is just the names of the people who are approved for the program, but the program itself, you've already voted on.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, back?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioner. This motion passed by the unanimous vote. Next is Resolution twenty-two-three-sixteen. City Attorney?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, for Approval of Change Order Number Nineteen to Resolution Number Twenty-sixteen dash two, zero pertaining to Palm Beach County's inter-local agreement with the City of Pahokee and Exhibit A of the coordination of road and utility construction for Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project as set forth in Exhibit A, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. Barfield Highway Change Order Nineteen, this change order is for Barfield Highway Reconstruction. The change order is for compensation to Rosso Site Development Contractor for the san- sanitary sewer revision number two per the Directive of Palm Beach County Water Utility District. The, the sanitary sewer, sewer services could not be connected to the newly-built sanitary sewer trunk line. The new line was about one foot higher than the original sewer being replaced. The additional exploratory work determined that it was not possible to tie the constructed sewer lines, which is located adjacent to the private properties, to a higher point. The sewer lines needed to be lowered and plans were revised. The work would also require the sanitary services be tied beyond the, uh, right-of-way limit into the private properties. All license agreements have been secured. The, the plan revision number two was issued by Palm Beach County Water Utility District on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. This revision also addressed the unforeseen force main, which is required to be rerouted into the new structure SS dash four. The force main is serving the Okeechobee Council on Aging Residents. Rosso is entitled to one-hundred percent of the one-hundred-and-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and forty-four cents for the changes as directed by Revision Number Two per Palm Beach County Water Utility District. This change order would also grant seven days. The price agreement is based on negotiated settlement. Staff recommends approving Change Order Number Nineteen.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, having heard Resolution twenty-two-three-sixteen properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by our city manager, what is your pleasure?
I'd rather move to accept Resolution twenty-two-three-sixteen.
I'll stack him.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two-three-sixteen. Call for questions?
Another question. What's the total amount, what's the total amount so far with all these, um, work order changes?
Ms. Adams?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. Commissioner Gonzalez, I will have to update the spreadsheet that we sent you once before with the change order, so we will have to add this one on. I don't have that price at the top of my head.
Was the last sheet corrected? If I'm correct, there was problems with it?
At the time that it was sent to you, yes, sir. But we've had additional.
The last one has already been updated, already corrected. I haven't received that one.
You haven't received that one? Because we have some additional ones that need to be added to it.
So, can, when can I get an updated one?
You can get that this week. Okay.
Excluding this one?
Including that one.
Excluded this one.
Excluding that one. Okay. I will exclude that one from it.
Um, okay. Uh, I have right here where it says cost to modify sanitary sewer trunk line, and that, that was seventy-seven thousand, and then overruns for eight-inch sewer and six-inch tap. This is dated two-twenty-three-twenty-three. This was in February?
Yes, ma'am. As I stated before, um, at previous commission meeting, there's a lot of, once, um, the change orders go through the process, Rosso submits them, our CEI looks at them, Palm Beach County looks over them, FDOT looks at them. They don't always come to commission right then. There's things that get pushed back, and they're, they go back and forth with pricing, because Rosso, JD, all of them have to make sure that pricings are in line. We try to get the price down as much as possible, and it has to be approved by FDOT, as well as Palm Beach County Water Utilities, before it can come to commission for your final approval. So in that case, that is Palm Beach County Water Utility District.
But this work has been done?
The work, it has not been done yet. I need approval, all of our, uh, change orders.
Cause I haven't seen it being done, so.
So this is what they're waiting on before we can, they can complete the work and I can send it to Palm Beach County.
Okay.
But as you see, Palm Beach County has given their, um, approval on that, uh, change order. They have signed off on it.
And, and, um, okay, I, I see a bill here from, from, uh, Mulo, and it's to deliver material to job site on Bacon Point Road. What do we have to do with Bacon Point Road?
It's a typo.
It should be, yeah, right here, it should be.
Barfield. It's a typo. Our apologies.
So, so whatever they're, they're saying here has already been delivered? This, this material's already been delivered?
Material has not been delivered. None, none of these, no work has been done.
No work's been done on the change.
You all get final approval.
We need approval prior to performing the work.
Ms. Adams, on this particular change orders, are we the first to, uh, give approval, or have prior approval been given by any other entities?
Prior approval is given by Palm Beach County Water Utility. As you see on, um, the change order request that comes from Rosso, it has Michael Resnick, who is the project director for Palm Beach County Water Utility. So their team reviews, um, they are in conversation with FDOT as well. So FDOT is, even though they are not funding this part of the project, they, they have reviewed as well. And then, so it comes to commission, final approval. These documents are then sent to Palm Beach County FDOT.
Okay. And do any of these approvals, these change orders, come with us only being the one who have to approve, assigned off on?
Repeat that.
Are there any change orders that come before us that we are the only entity that have to approve it?
No, sir.
So, um, the question, the statement I'm trying to make here, there are several layers of checks and balances to, other than just the City of Pahokee.
Correct.
Even for an increase in costs, contract costs?
Everything. Project costs, because, again, the money does not come from the city. The money comes from Palm Beach County and FDOT. So in order for them to approve and know if they have the money, they have to review the costs. There's nothing that comes from, um, Rosso's subs. That cost has to go to Rosso. Our CEI engineer, Robert Ardet, reviews and has conversation with Palm Beach County Water. They have a team of staff who are engineers that review and justify that these dollar amounts are taking place, as well as FDOT.
Oh, I ha- I have a question. Um, as, as I was looking at the, at the resolutions, uh, we, we passed one, I believe it was the last meeting, and it was that, the, the CEI, where we, we did the two-hundred-and-forty-some thousand dollars. Um, I was reading it, and it referred to twenty Resolution twenty-two-one oh eight. And it said that on that resolution, we voted, cause he bid it four-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand.
No, he bid it two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand.
I know that.
But the, so, the state will allow ten percent of the project, ten to twelve percent of the project for CEI costs. Those costs, they, so they put aside that pot of money, that four-hundred-and-forty-six or forty-eight thousand, that is what they have allotted for. So when we went back to commission to ask for that adjustment of the price for CEI to cover the remaining costs for CEI, that took him up to the full amount that FDOT will allow for. FDOT is the only one that covers CEI costs. Palm Beach County does not cover CEI costs.
Well, I mean, I, I have a question, and, and I hope you could answer this to me. Why, if you, if, okay, you have allowed four-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars for CEI services. You bid it out, and you picked the lowest bidder, which happened to be two-seventeen. Maybe there's another one that, that bid it whatever. And then you come up with, with this, this other, uh, amount, which is, which is higher than the amount that was bid it. How is, I mean, I don't know if that's, if that's right, if it's legal or what, because what I'm saying is, you got the lowest bidder, which now in turns, it's, it's getting half a, uh, half a million dollars, which is started with a quarter of a million dollars. So how is that fair to all the other bidders that bid it on, on the, on the job?
So, Commissioner, at the time that, um, Momentum CEI put their bid in, they were the lowest bidder. Our ordinance states we have to, um, not our, our, our ordinance states that our, we have to accept the lowest bidder. He was the lowest bidder. That was something that, uh, Momentum chose to do. Now, if we chose someone else and they came back, because you have to remember that the project has extended past the time that was originally allotted for. So, had someone else bid and say they bid three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, we would have been still coming back with another change order for change order extension of time, change order to extend CEI services. So we would have still had to pay an additional, over and above what we did, the four-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. That four-hundred-and-forty-six thousand is what FDOT allotted for in their pot. Although Ardet only bid two-seventeen, they kept that pot there. Anything that exceeded that four-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, the city would have had to cover that change order and those additional costs from CEI.
Okay, I, I, my question is, why, why was the, why was the time delayed? Cause, cause, cause I, I know that this is allowed in the contract, so why was the time delayed? What was the cost of it?
You mean for the project overall?
Yes.
So, as, and I'll let Rosso explain more, but as you've seen in the past, we've had change orders, we've had hiccups, we've had different incidents that have allowed for different change orders. Everything from what you are just approving now, the sewer. So there's been additional things that have, were not accounted for because we have an old road.
Okay, um, I read the entire contract for A and E. And in the, and in the designing and everything that they were supposed to do, all of this was supposed to be addressed. The sewer, the everything, the high, the lower, the, if, if the new one was gonna be compatible with the old, all this was, was part of that. So, I don't understand, and, 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 and in another tone, the water utility contract was awarded, was awarded during the same time, or I believe it was a little previous, that there was an inter-local agreement with the water department in case that the, the city was gonna do any reconstruction to do it, uh, right along with them, so, so that, you know, it could be done at the same time. So it could be convenient for the residents, traffic control, all that sort of stuff. So, here we are, um, I don't know who A and E is, I've never seen them, uh, they've never come here, they've never talked, but in their contract, all this was supposed to be. but in their contract, all this was supposed to be addressed. And it's my understanding that CEI comes back and gets the plans and rolls with it.
So again, those unforeseen occurrences, design engineer still wouldn't have been able to see them. It takes exploratory work, which we did a couple of weeks ago? A couple of months ago for additional exploratory utilities, which is Rosso. Rosso is the contractor for both the utilities and the construction. They are working, that, that change order is a utility change order for construction. So that, that, those lines are being like, laying after you approve the, and they can move forward.
Even, even that is in the contract.
May I interject?
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Perez, so we have pulled up here, how do you get that? The resolution, you're, you're talking apples to oranges. Here, this resolution you speak of, twenty twenty-three oh nine, is from FDOT. That is Palm Beach County, two different entities.
I don't know what twenty twenty-three oh nine you're talking about.
Well, the, the change order, you quoted, so. Mayor, may I come down and show?
I was talking about twenty twenty-one oh eight, I wasn't talking about the twenty twenty-three oh nine.
Okay, twenty twenty-one oh eight. Isn't that what you were talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
It says that.
And that's the Florida Department of Transportation. We are on Palm Beach County Water.
Yeah, and I'm talking about the CEI, that's what I said. That I was, I was bringing the one that we, we passed last time. Because I noticed that.
So, so that's old business. So, can we move along if we will?
Mr. Mayor?
This is old business, I mean.
One of, one of the things that Commissioner Perez said, what she said is that legal. So I just want to interject that change orders are common. There are oftentimes, I mean, it just happens all of the time. You may have other change orders related to this project, you probably will. And so you, we have the same discussion over and over again, there's nothing wrong with it. Other governmental entities have already approved it and, and said it's okay, they've looked at these things. It happens every single day that something comes up. So in terms of the initial procurement, the city did exactly what it was supposed to do. It took the low bidder, it, it proceeded with this. It wouldn't have mattered who it was, whether it was the highest bidder, or the, you know, or someone else. You still would have had these change orders because they are inevitable when you're talking about projects that you haven't done anything on for a long, long time, like this roadway. It's nothing bad, it's completely common, it happens all the time. And so I know we continue to have the same discussion every meeting whenever you have a change order, but it's nothing wrong with what the city is doing. And all these governmental entities have already looked at it and approved it already. You're fine, it's legal.
And Mayor Brad, I can even add to that, if you look at the bottom, and they're the one is paying for. We, we only the last entity just, because we host the contract, but we just have to finalize for them to get to work. That's all we're doing.
Yeah, we're the last one, we're the ones here, we're the one that got the eyes. And just because DLT is paying for it, it doesn't mean that, you know, I'm gonna see something that, you know, it's been built and it's not correct, and just let it, just let it go by.
But it went through four entities already before it got to us.
And Commissioner Perez, with all disrespect, if something occurs when, when we send in the billing and billing is incorrect, FDOT, Palm Beach County, they don't send the check. That has to be corrected before they will send a check. So then we go back and they have to change what they do.
It's all in the paperwork, as long as your paperwork says, is whatever the paperwork says, that's what they go by.
No, they check their numbers.
They don't look at it, they don't come and inspect it.
Palm Beach County, Palm Beach County and FDOT, they check numbers.
Yeah.
They check numbers.
Have a question.
Are there in addition questions?
Yes, Ms. Adams, based on what you said that this happens, because we can't see the unforeseen things coming up. So how is it that we already had these beforehand and they haven't even gotten that far in the project?
They did, so when we brought in, brought a change order for exploratory work.
Right, how many change orders are on the list right now? Besides, besides number nineteen? How many work orders do we have already on the list and they haven't been that far ahead yet?
I have three change orders that will be coming to you all probably at next commission.
Right, and if I'm correct, some of these change orders have already been on the list for months, but yet they haven't gotten that far, so how is that possible?
But again, those things go back and forth with Palm Beach County and FDOT. So they're still, they can still be in review and process. There's things that they have before them right now, that was probably from a couple of months ago, and it has not come to commission. They may not even make it to commission. So that's just the way that, that their process works.
But you do understand what I'm saying, right?
I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
And shouldn't that exploratory, shouldn't that have been done at the time that your engineering is preparing to your, to do your design and all that?
So because I'm, I'm not an engineer, I'm all allowed to change things.
Be honest, I don't want to speak to your contract with the engineer, because it's not with me, it's, it's not my place to speak on that contract. It's, you all to review and, and pick out whatever it is you all need to do to get everything sorted out. That's, 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 that's all I can do on that.
Okay.
You got anything else, Paul?
No.
We, we don't.
You have a question, Commissioner?
No, given the redundancy with regard to our conversations or deliberations about change orders, I think in the future, we need to maybe limit that to no more than ten minutes, because this happens every time. So for future reference, I think we should probably limit that discussion.
See, saying, in other words, whatever's concerning, we should keep our mouth shut.
No, I mean, it's, it's proper, doing proper rules and order, you can vote on limiting the discussion, the conversation on the high end.
Absolutely.
So at that time, if it go along, someone can make a motion to do that, but we, we're gonna move, we're gonna move forward.
I just want to remind you guys that whatever we're discussing here, you know, is, is the taxpayers' money in, in the regards of money, and, and it's a service to the city. So if you want to come up here and you want to restrict the questions and restrict the time and restrict whatever it is that I want to ask, or anybody else for that matter, it just happens that I'm the only one that raises the questions and you guys think it's redundant. I, I deal with, with bids and contracts, you know, I've been dealing with them for, for a while. And, 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 and I know, I know pretty much how they work. I've, I've done a lot of looking into it and, and I don't have it here, but, you know, there's, there's, there's a site that you go and you look at all the dues and don't, don't on, on, on bids and contracts. And, and I know what I'm reading and I know what I know, and that is what I ask. But tomorrow, they leave and we have a storm, we have a hurricane, and, and the water starts to build and, and the sewer starts to back up or whatever, then, you know, what's gonna happen? Because we just sat here, we didn't ask any questions. We don't have anybody that physically goes over there and sees what they're doing and, and understands what they're doing and all that. Because with all due respect, Ms. Adams, you're not an expert. So, so, you know, I, I just don't, that, that is my take on it.
Okay, we're gonna move, we're gonna move forward.
Thank you.
There are no additional questions, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Mayor Brad?
Yes, motion passed by a majority, three two vote.
Just move it not to continue the process on Pohokee.
Now we move to new business. Presentation by the City Manager of Activities, Upcoming Events, if any. First item on our new business is the Palm Beach County League of Cities Voting Delegate Form. City Manager?
Yes, sir. The voting delegates and alternates, I just wanted to go over the, the names we have on here. We have Mayor Keith Bab, Jr., Vice Mayor Claire, Tasha Mervin, Commissioner Derek Bowden, Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, Commissioner Sarah Perez, the City Manager, myself, Deputy Jodgelen. Was there any other persons left off the, the list for the, our membership? So the mayor is our voting person and then all the rest are alternates.
I think the City Manager are there. I entertain a motion for the adoption of our voting delegate list consisting of the mayor being the voting delegate with the alternative, alternates being the City Commissioner, entire City Commissioner and the City Clerk, as well as the City Manager. It is being moved by Commissioner Maureen Gonzalez and second by Commissioner Bowden for the adoption of the voting delegation to the League of Cities. Call for question? Here in honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yeah.
Mayor Brad?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. Next is the discussion and the direction of consolidating the ARPA from two years to one year, City Manager.
Sir, there's been some discussion in the general sessions of Congress about ARPA and maybe trying to take funds back so that we don't encounter any of these things. I would like for the Commission to consider consolidating our year two into year one and move forward with that and, and move out all our allocation.
Okay, question, for instance?
Yes.
The, the, the funding you're satisfied for policing for the second year, how are you gonna manage that? Where is that money gonna go in this current budget year? You can't, I don't think you're able to pay it a year in advance, so where did that go? And how do you?
I, I have to ask PBSO if we may do that. So I would need to ask them and come back with, to the Commission with their answer.
Then would you prepay them two years, a, a, a year in advance?
I have to, I have to ask them. So I don't have a problem putting an email together and sending that out tomorrow.
You know they're gonna say yeah, who doesn't want to get paid ahead of time? It's half a million dollars, they'll pick you out.
I'm wondering also, could you maybe put it in a special escrow account and then disperse it to follow year? I, I don't know if that's, uh, can be done, but maybe that's a possibility. In, in addition to that, you're saying all of the, the funds that were satisfied for year two would now just carry over for this current year and be expended?
Yes, so for example, the two hundred thousand now would come to four hundred and forty-two thousand for what we just approved today under minor home repair.
So, Mr. Mayor? So I'm assuming the manager's bringing this up for discussion, you wouldn't be voting on this tonight? Those items will have to come back with budgets that accompany it for your approval at a later time, if that's what you choose to do, so.
And Mayor, you know, if you've been listening on the, on the, with the state, when they're talking about their budget, they're, they are looking for cities that have not spent their ARPA monies to reclaim or back, to balance their budget. So it will behoove us to move it and spend it. That's, that's what, that's what they're saying, because the state is looking.
Where you heard that?
It's, it's, it's in, and plus they were talking about it when we, we, we was up there in town, I have to say. So that's what, that's what, that's why they's doing what he's doing.
I went to the same meetings, I didn't hear that.
That's why they're doing what they're, that's why they're saying, because they are looking to pull money back if it have not been spent. They're looking at cities that have, don't use their monies.
Well, Mayor Brad, I'll say this, as Commissioners, I think it's important for us to stay abreast on what's going on nationally, you know, as well as locally, and from the information that we gathered, I think that's the best course of action. We have to know what's actually going on to really understand why this is an important decision we have to make. I don't think, speaking more in detail or something, we should be doing that.
Okay. So again, it would have to be brought back to be just, I guess, trying to get a consensus of whether or not the majority at least is accepting of that before you put all the information that need to be brought forth to be voted on.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Ray. Any other updates on your new business?
That was it, sir.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move into the Mayor's report. Again, I just want to congratulate the city staff and all of the community partners for a great day of I Love Pohokee. I think it was well represented and a great event for our city. Also want to thank State Representative, House Representative Rick Roth, providing the city with a proclamation recognizing and honoring our centennial as well as I Love Pohokee Day. Also want to suggest, and I'll be requesting this on the topic of agenda item, a future agenda item is looking at the, our take-home vehicle policy to make sure that we have one in place and is voted on and approved by the City Commission. I also want to have an ordinance adopted, a lease explored that would require apartment heads and up to live within the city of Pohokee. The City of Tampa does it, the City of River Beach does it, and several other municipalities do that. They allow a person to be hired and they give them up to a year to have residency within the city of Pohokee. And that, in most cases, even include the City Manager, but a lot of times through negotiation of a contract, that may not be the case, but if we put it as an ordinance, it could, could very well be adopted and passed. Those are just two items I would hope we just take in consideration. Doesn't mean it's gonna pass, doesn't mean everyone is in favor of it, but if the majority is, that these two things need to be definitely in place, I believe. Lastly, I just want to mention that St. James AME Church is celebrating their centennial and they invited all of our City Commission to come out and join them in that celebration. It's from April the twenty seventh to April the thirtieth, commencing on the fifth Sunday, which is April the thirtieth at six thirty PM. So if any of the program, if you can come, that would be great, especially the, the last day of their celebration. I think each of us received a letter inviting us, I'm just acknowledging it publicly that they are. I'm just acknowledging it publicly that they are requesting an action.
What was the dates again?
April the 27th through the 30th, April the 30th. And the 30th is the fifth Sunday. That program is at 3:30. The program on the 27th, if I'm not mistaken, I think is at seven o'clock. But don't, don't miss it. I'm not sure on that one. Can't remember. Okay, and lastly, I just wanna ask the City Attorney as far as, and we need to approve it if we're gonna do it. I believe at our last Commission meeting or a meeting or two before, we voted on the recommendation that the City Charter Review Committee recommended. I think if I'm not mistaken, and maybe the Clerk even have some information on it. There's a deadline between completing their report and actually taking some type of action on it. I know it's not an election cycle, I guess until November. I don't know if they're gonna pass that deadline. It'll be a lot.
We already voted.
Least expensive if there's an election, but if we hold our own special election, it gonna cost more to do that. I'm just trying to figure out what means and what method are we gonna be able to first get the City Clerk to write up the language and then submit it so it can be placed on a special election or some other election that we need to have?
So the, the language is already within the ordinance, so that's a part of the ordinance that's passed and that's what the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections will pick up. But in terms of the legislation, it contemplated the next general election and so that wouldn't be until next year. And, and then the Supervisor of Elections Office gives you the dates upon which you have to have your ballot initiatives in and your candidates and all of that. And then the clerks get that information and then our clerk will comply with that once she, you know, she gets the notices from the Supervisor's Office. But that, again, that wouldn't be until next year.
Okay, yeah, that was my concern. I wasn't aware that we had that much time between the recommendation being forward and a vote occurring. So you're saying that March of next year, we'll be able to have that on the ballot, those are recommendations?
Yes, sir. And the reason why, as you, you, the person who brought it up correctly, the reason why you brought up the issue of the Charter Review Commission meeting was because that under your charter has a five-year point upon which you have to start meeting within that time. It doesn't necessarily make, I mean, it doesn't require an alignment with an election year. It's just you had to do that pursuant to your charter.
That will conclude my report. And next we'll move to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I handed out a few things along with my City Manager's report. There was also, I wanted to make sure you guys got the roundtable information. I was the only person just back here. So I was the only one in attendance from the City of Pahokee today at the roundtable meetings, but they've said each and every one of you have, have attended except for Bowden. So I just wanted to make sure you had that information. I just wanted to touch base with you on, under consensus, if I may, Mayor. Would like to set a workshop for annexation with Palm Beach County for Tuesday, May 9th, from 5:00 to 6:00. Wanted to have you guys check with your schedule. And then Town Hall meeting for Wednesday, May 17th, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the gym for financial literacy.
Could you be a little specific on, on that is more geared towards the community or commission or combination with the financial literacy and what kinda, what would be discussing, how that would go?
So on financial literacy, it was just to inform the public of how to manage a budget, a home budget, their, their bills, their financing. I had several agencies that would like to, to participate, one of which was Dr. Diamond, the other was a young lady with an agency nonprofit that did literacy. I wanted to talk to PNC Bank about attending, just to give a broad sense of financial literacy in that sense, sir, for educational purposes.
And the time you have scheduled, 6:30 to what's the time?
From 6:00 to 7:30. Usually you guys like to do about hour and a half, so didn't know if that was too long or too short.
So basically we have some presenters and then we have open like questions and answers?
Yes, sir.
And that's in the gym?
Yes.
And what was that first meeting?
Workshop with Palm Beach County. That's what.
Right, okay.
Sorry.
The Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council will be doing the workshop for annexation.
Thank you.
May 9th and 5:00 PM, what I think we're hoping for, 5:00 PM workshop.
What was the time?
5:00 PM workshop, May 9th.
Treasure Coast, I apologize.
That's gonna be here at the chamber or at the gym, officer?
That's Commission Meeting Day, so we'll do a workshop. And I did reach out to League of Cities, Mr. Radcliffe, and so if, he was, he was unavailable when I reached out to him, so I'm gonna follow back up with him tomorrow because maybe he can be able to share some additional things with us.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Now just moving along, well, let me know if that's a consensus for those two items of the Commission. And then following up from Citizens' public comments over the last two meetings, Maiden Kane has been removed in East Lake Village pending removing several piles of debris in the area. I think they have like three piles. Just a follow-up, in this pack you will see attached East Lake Village status for code enforcement. So in here you will see 423 Sable Court, overgrown lot, owner has been contacted. That is, let's see here. I believe two of the vacant lots is Palm Beach County. And I have that information in here for your review. Then we have an unsafe structure on the abatement list at 851 Ricky Jackson Boulevard on South Coconut Bacon Lot. The second one is owned by Palm Beach County. And the other at 412 South Coconut has a unsafe structure. It's Exor Rickler is the owner there, so they have been notified. Parker Building Status pending sighting from building official and Harry is not cooperating with the signing of agreement for corrections of that property. He says that, I spoke with him today before coming here, and he says that he'll be observing the next four days, his Jewish holiday, and will be speaking again Thursday. So I wanted to bring you up to speed on that. At 179 Cypress, owner is not cooperating with us regarding, he has removed all the fencing from the second level, but he hasn't said if he's selling the property or what, but he says no one is living there. Then under the Neat Grant applications of late, letter of intents are due tomorrow for MLK retaining wall, traps and emergency kits, East Lake Village entry sign, East Lake High School historic sign, directional signs for city facilities and parks and, and other items. I started infrastructure assessment with Mayor Bab and Mr. Joseph Wednesday, April 5th. I'm trying to compile things to see what we could form out or do ourselves with potholes, aprons, and sidewalks. So Mayor got me on a good start and I appreciate his assistance. Coming up, luncheons, conferences, Palm Beach League of Cities, District Five either. So this Thursday, I'm, I'm to attend with one person. I just had to clarify with Mayor.
You can do the segment.
Okay, so Vice Mayor, you would be next in line. Then after that, I guess Bowden, Gonzalez, and Perez would be the order as we vote. So this is one-on-ones, so I didn't know, Vice Mayor, if you're available this Thursday to go up to Lakeside?
I'll give, I should be, I should be. What time?
At noon.
Yeah, that should be okay.
And then we have the West Palm Beach Farm 2023 at the Hilton, West Palm Beach for Monday, April 17th, from noon to 4:00 at 600 Okeechobee Boulevard. Also, we have the General Membership Meeting for Palm Beach County League of Cities for Wednesday, April 26th at noon at Green Acres Community Center. And in that same day at 1:00, there's an elected official workshop hosted by Palm Beach County League of Cities at the same address. So just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Is any cost associated with the farm at the Hilton on April the 7th?
I, I have to, I'll double check. I thought it was just our, our membership that we have paid, but I'll check into payment if necessary, so. All right, so action plan of, we're gonna bring forward the, well, is it a direction for me to bring Mayor back the resolution to be consolidated at the next meeting? Yeah, consolidate year one and two?
Oh.
I didn't know if we had voted yes or no?
No, we didn't vote on it, but that was just consensus to allow you to bring it back for consideration.
Yes, sir. I understand that there's no payment necessary for the elected workshop, sir. All right, just update on the Marina. We were able to meet with FDEP and today they sent back some items. I just need to go over it with Ms. Bernadette regarding the options of the extension and the timeline. So once I, I get with her, I'll bring an updated report to the Commission on, on that. And then our outstanding items is still the audit for 2021. The Inspector General ongoing. Basically, they said that it'll be through July and we are pending the contract extension, which we just received today, information on it. Then events and meetings, so Saturday, well, first, I saw something in here. Tomorrow is Career Fair for Young Adults through Career Source. April 12th is tomorrow from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It's for the age groups of 18 to 24. Just wanted the public to know about that, the opportunities if you're looking for employment. Also Saturday, April 22nd, we got two things going on. At 8:00 AM to noon will be the Great American Cleanup for the City of Pahokee. And then also you have the Pahokee Rotary Club for fishing tournament at the same time. And then after that, the following Saturday, April, I mean, May 6th, the Cinco de Mayo. And then May 13th, the evasion of the month top five car and bike show. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the.
You didn't, you didn't go over developing a potential agreement with WGI for planner and engineering services.
So we met with WGI last week and I'm working out the, the plans for that as of speak. So sometime this week, I will have either agreement or we'll be back to the drawing board of utilizing an emergency planner and engineer. Yes, we have to go through the procuring process of RFP if we don't work out because we are under contract with them through '24.
One other question?
WGI, there's, there's.
They, they do several things, you know, so they can do planning, they can do engineering, they can do architectural, they're, they're full-fledged agency. Yeah, you guys signed them under Brendan Burr. It's just a problem that I have with developers are, they're pricey and they, they pushing back on me. So that's been the beef with some of the delays with Mike Snodgrass and over at 200 South Barfield. He says they're expensive and they add to the cost. Then also with One North, Aaron Taylor is saying the same thing as their point person. So I'm trying to negotiate that price downward so that it doesn't detour development. That's what I'm working out.
On, on, on South Lake, the Maiden Kane in the canal that across from the, King Bee and the fire station, that current area, have we got any, any follow-up identified who's responsible? I noticed something that the city between some of the Commission and everybody been trying to pitch in and help out or try to do it, but have your staff identified who's the owner and could we get that cut some kind of way? I mean, they, Palm Beach County paved the road, but it's still a safety hazard to have that high grass around that curb when you can't see anything one way or the other coming or going. And even the county commissioner, we spoke, I mean, have we got any feedback, any follow-up?
Took over DVI?
Mayor Bab, no, DVI is not gonna, I have been in contact with the county on that. I remember before Commissioner McKinney left and there was a staff there. I got some emails on the Maiden Kane getting cut down, but once office changed, with the county changed, maybe Ms. Gina probably helped us with that with Sarah Baxter now because I have, I do have some emails where they were. where they were trying to come down, they were asking the county to go ahead and just cut it, and they'll bill whomever they have to bill at, at later. But I do have those emails, I do have some follow-up on, on about those, the Main Can going around the curve. But it's, it's, it's a big fight, because even the county trying to figure out who are, I guess, East, East Beach is saying one and then the other is saying, saying something, but the county just asked, just go and get it cut and then they'll see when they need a charge after, at a later date, because it's a I.S.O.R.
You say the county, the county asked enough to get it cut?
No.
Or they're gonna try that?
Yeah, they will go ahead and just get it cut, yeah.
My question was, because my cousin used to work for DVI, he's the one that used to cut it.
Yeah, but they're not over that anymore.
That's what I'm saying, who's over DVI now?
I don't know about DVI, but I know they're not over that part, they're not, because I thought that.
Okay.
It's not DVI anymore. Yeah, I'll send it to you.
So, if I, Mayor and Commission, on the 21st of this month, Mr. Lucas and I have a discussion with Todd, Assistant County Commissioner, Todd Barillon, and that is part of the discussion so that we can figure out how we can go about getting that cut and getting maintained, and I'm hoping to be able to bring in East Beach Water Control District in that conversation.
And for the record, Mayor, that, that is right across from that entryway on, on Lake, South Lake and where Barfield is, that little bend right there, or the one at McClure?
It's McClure, it's the whole South Lake.
That whole, that whole stretch, right?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. And not to prolong anything, we didn't get a, a brief update on the projects neither, we were on McClure, is it soon coming online, it's one or two others, but I can't, just want to make sure that we on our timeline.
Okay, Mayor and Commission, on the 18th, I have a discussion with Palm Beach County, WGI, and East Beach Water Control District, and we're starting our McClure project. We will discuss utility, water utilities, the design, everything that is needed so we can get going on McClure. That discussion will happen on the 18th.
Okay, and MLK, we have funded about two years.
So RFPs will be going out, I had a pushback originally, they were supposed to have been a couple of weeks ago, so I need some changes made and then I will be sending that RFP out. And then Ms. Belay is gonna give you an update for the NEAT grant.
One more before you go, the Phase 4 project?
Phase 4 project, so we, that was scheduled to come to commission, but there's some clarity that I need to get from when and since with their contract, so I pulled it back off the agenda, so next commission meeting I will be able to have that to bring forward.
And Eastlake?
I don't have an update for Eastlake as of yet, I will have for next commission
In terms of the NEAT grant for this past grant year, we had a walkthrough with one of our, our liaisons or grant managers with the county, and we did a walkthrough through, through MLK as well as Commissioners Park, and we discussed just different things that we'll be doing through the grant there, and then we have a few LOIs that Mr. Lucas explained will be going out for the upcoming NEAT grant cycle.
And that was with the Office of Community Revitalization, that's who that, that NEAT grant is funded through, for Commissioners Park and MLK. Thank you.
Where did America, where did it go? I think we now on the comments of the, comments of the city attorney.
On, well, since the last meeting, I met with the city manager, Ms. Adams, and another staff person in FDOT, and it looks like in terms of the Marina, in FDEP actually, and in terms of the Marina, I think we're moving in a good direction. We've also spoken with a couple of contractors who on an emergency basis, the issue may come back to you all to approve, to try to get the repairs done, but FDEP appears to be willing to work with the city and extend deadlines, and, and I think we're on a, on a good track, so I'm happy to report that. In addition, I also wanted to just follow up with a comment, there was a question made tonight regarding the minor home repair program, and I think everybody's a little right, because let me explain, as a part of the affidavit that all homeowners have to sign, there is a certification that says that following repair service completion and the city inspection, the applicant will be reimbursed for the full amount of the completed repair service excluding taxes. However, it also says that the city will also have the option to disburse final payment directly to the response, to the contractual service company completing the home repairs. So it does allow for the city to have the option, and so they're signing this as a part of the affidavit, so that's probably why there was some, you know, confusion, because the city does still have the option, although, you know, the city can pay the homeowner directly, so I just wanted to clear that up. And with that, that's, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Now we'll move to the future agenda items of commission, if any. I did mention two that I would like to have added for a future agenda item, one being the vehicle take-home policy. If we don't have one completed, we need to have it completed for our consideration for approval or any amendment or changes. If we have one currently, we'd like to take a look at it so we can make changes if needed. And the second one is a ordinance or policy that would require city employees with the position of department head or higher to be required to live within the city of Pahokee. And the reason that being is to try to increase our, would you use the word, Derek, the, the, the living wages that residents make within this?
Median household income? You talking about median household income?
Right, to at least increase that by having residents that have good paying jobs live here, and that's a twofold success if it can be accomplished, because what happened, the, the residents now spend their money here in Pahokee, at least a good portion of it, to help the economy and the condition of our area, so it's several reasons for that, and those are some of the reasons that are cited and the reason for other cities doing similar. So I just want us to take a look at that, if Georgia prove it, that's great, if not, then I can live with that, but I think it's definitely worth looking at. And I would ask for a approval, just to bring it for us for a future agenda item, so the city manager and the attorney have need to be involved in, in drafting the ordinance or whatever could, could give the permission to bring that forward to us for consideration. And I'll start with a, a, a second, if I can get it, I'm gonna make the motion. Commissioner Gonzalez saying second vote, I'm gonna use that as a combined motion for both for item. Call for questions on any, anything on those two items.
There's nothing in the books right now?
No, and that's why I asked the city manager and clerk to make sure that we don't have currently a policy, a take-home policy for vehicles. If we do, we would like for that to be brought to us so we can review it and see if there's any changes we would like to recommend or amend to that. That if we don't currently have one, if we don't currently have one, then we asking a policy to be brought to us so we can have our consideration to adopt.
Did we ever find out if there was one, what was the procedure when you have an accident with, with a company vehicle? Because I know that happened to be there.
Do we, do we currently have one that you're aware of, Mr. Lucas? A take-home policy?
No.
No.
Okay, see, we don't have one.
About accident?
And that, and that part of that policy would be all the regulations in there, what happened when there was an accident, you probably need to, if a person taking on a vehicle, to have a, a driving, a.
Accident.
Not a driver report to show that they are a safe driver prior to giving or allowing an employee to use it, what happened when you have accidental accident, a fall accident, all of that would be part of that policy.
The laws of liability.
Yeah, in that part, but.
And it's a great take-home policy already in there, most of them really pertain to police officers, but there's a lot of cities that have employee take on their vehicle, most of them due to emergent situation where the individual call it after the, that situation over, the vehicle normally go back into the city compound, but however we want to do it, we can do it, but we do need a policy, we, we definitely need one, since we don't have one currently.
So that's like three?
Huh?
So that's three?
No, there was two parts, there was two items, I was just sharing some of the things that was included in most take-home policy. And you, and you do it not based on seniority or position, it's really the necessity in most cases why, why vehicles are being taken home, of course, you know, your city manager on this contract, normally he has a vehicle, he take on, but outside of that, you know, it's, it's a pain.
Now, if, if an employee has prior traffic violations, how would it affect us with our, with our liability or insurance? Let's say, for example, you drive a vehicle, you have an accident, but you have priors, your personal use or anywhere, how would it affect our insurance? Would it affect us?
Yeah, that's something we would have to speak with the carrier, more than likely it does affect you, and, and some policies even require the employee to have the city as an additional insured on their, their policy, where they can't have family members ride, they can't do any personal driving outside of just business being conducted, so it's just depending on what policy we make, but I would suggest that, just for reference, if we just Google vehicle policy, take-home policy, there's some great policies out there, and it'll help protect the city in incident where there are some issues or concern. But right now, if an employee taking on a vehicle, I don't think they have any standard guideline on what they can and cannot do in that vehicle and how it should be maintained. Most take-home policies have even a law where they log their time in and their time out and the way, the travel where they went, and they turn that in on a long basis.
In fairness, I didn't ask that before.
And the number of reading.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. That should be a requirement.
And in case of, in case of an accident, what, do we have a, a policy, what, how, you know, how long do you have to report it?
To the city.
And all that, do we have one in place now?
No.
Yes.
You have a person.
Yeah, in the personnel policy, we have an accident policy that's already in place
for vehicles.
Can you tell us the steps?
No, I can't quote the steps, I'm not gonna quote it, I can pull it up for you and email it to you guys.
Okay, what I said to your attorney, have that information? Who'd you have that information?
Not off the top of my head, but I do know that there is a section in that policy that relates to vehicles. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I think all of us, if not, we need to request one, a personnel policy that, and I know they give it to new commission when they come on board, it really, all staff should have the personnel policy. I sometimes misplace mine, I have to request another one, but it's good to have a reference of what we have on file.
I'll make sure I send it out tomorrow to all of you.
So as normal procedure, we, we take a vote on those two, we have a motion and a second for those two future agenda items to be brought to the commission. In addition to question on those items, here and now, you ready for a vote roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner, motion passed by unanimous vote. Are there any additional items that any commissioner would desire to be added as a future agenda Here and now, we'll move now to the commission comments and for the good of the order, and we'll start with Commissioner Gonzalez.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for coming to our meeting tonight, I want to congratulate everybody who had received the proclamation tonight. Thank you deputies, Sheriff Department for everything you do for us, I know you guys have a hard job out there, and if I'm correct, you guys were shot at, that said, specifically in our community, because I thought, to me, I think we could do a lot better than that, you know, respect the ones who are protecting us, I want to apologize, me personally, for that happening here. Another thing is, I've been trying to get, somehow I have difficulty in getting FS 119 reports when I submit them, no matter if I'm in, in the person's office, person's face, or on the, or sending emails. I requested some documents almost two years ago from Ms. Adams, still to this day, still haven't received them, I don't know what it takes to get these FS 119 reports, so Mayor, I don't know if you have any pool on that, but these documents I've been requesting for a while, it's already been two years, still nothing, and I don't know what the hiccup Does some reference to the project of Shab Island?
Okay. And my feel-good announcement will be, I forgot it now, I'm getting the senior moment.
Today.
I don't have too much time, we'll move to Commissioner Bowden.
Mr. Gonzalez, Commissioner Gonzalez has already said what I wanted to say, I don't have anything else to add to that.
I do remember now, I just want to thank the commission really as a whole, I think this meeting here has been very good, as well as the last commission meeting, I wanted to acknowledge that that time, I said, you know what, I need to, at least see if we can do it two consecutive meetings, and we have, so I really thank you, I think the public thank us too, you know, that we can disagree on some things, but be agreeable the way we disagree, so that's a good thing, that's my feel-good announcement. Now we'll move to Commissioner.
Sure. Okay, one thing that I wanted to, to, to run by all you guys, is there any reason why the city cannot take the 35 acres that, so famously we talk about that the city owns and built, the city built the, the affordable housing on those 35 acres, and it'll be the city. I know that, that, like I said, we could partner with Habitat for Humanity and do a partnership, same, the same money that, that you sell, you keep, you keep flipping and you keep building until you develop the area. until you develop the area. And it could be all, it could be all rental, if you just want to do rental, or it could be housing, single-family homes, it could be townhomes, condominiums, but, you know, that'll be something that, that could prove to be affordable for the citizen in this city, because anything you do with a, with a private investor, you know, it's gonna end up in market rate. Even though there's a percentage, none of them are gonna give you fifty or above percent of, of low income, so could that be possible?
I know there's a definite need for housing, certainly affordable housing, and I know we're not in the, uh, business of building houses, but it's, I think it's a great idea if it can be done, if we can come up with the funding to do it, it can even create, uh, jobs on behalf of the city. You're gonna need maintenance, you're gonna need a, uh, property manager to manage it for you, so I, I think it's, it could be possible. I'm certainly, uh, housing is number one, if not the top on my list of things that I think the city should and should be doing. I think all cities are having issues with having affordable housing, so if can be done, it can be looked at, I think we, it's worth looking at and exploring, I definitely do.
I mean, we have, we have the land, and I know the county has the money, and I know that we got the need, and I know that we have the incentives, so not to take advantage of that opportunity, I think it's...
So is there any way we could tour this? Because I understand our property's right across the street from the wastewater plant, and who wants to smell sewer? So that, that is a barrier we need to consider and, and, and figure it out.
Is that place still active?
Yeah. From what I understand, our wastewater treatment plant's out there on that road.
I thought it was closed.
No, it is definitely closed, it's been closed for years, and, uh, I don't know, I, I've personally been out there several times, I had a fax, kind of tucked some envelopers out there. I'm not saying it's not the smell, but I haven't smelled anything out there. And I don't walk out there on that ground, so, you know. Yeah, it's a lot that it's gonna have to be taken into consideration, but I'm just saying, as an exploring, uh, phase, I, I think it's worth just looking into, you know, for ruling it out.
Well, there's a way, there's a way.
They have say, Commissioner?
Oh, I just wanted to, um, just briefly say in Spanish the, the new things that are coming. Uh, para los hispanos que están prestando atención, uh, tenemos un tornado de pescadería para los niños que son la edad de cinco a diecisiete. Uh, van todo, va a ser gratis, van a tener la varita, eh, la carnada, y todo lo que necesitan. También le van a enseñar a los niños cómo pescar. Va a ser el sábado, abril veintidós, en, en, en el puente de pescade aquí, en el, en el pier de, de Pahokee. Desde ocho de la mañana a las doce del día. Esto va a ser, uh, parte del, del Rotary Club, uh, el departamento de los sheriffes, Witchworth, uh, Fish Florida, FWC, NHE Foundation. Solo que van a, a hacer el sponsor el evento. También tenemos la inclusión de los jóvenes del veinte veintitrés. Va a ser el domingo, mayo veintiuno, a las cuatro de la tarde, en la iglesia New Bethel Missionary Baptist Church. La dirección... Who's the address?
The address, please.
No tengo la dirección, pero es va a ser una, una con testa si, si tiene algún talento. Va a ser para los del cinco, dieciocho año, si sabe cantar, si sabe bailar, si sabe rap, uh, si tiene algún talento. El primer precio va a ser mil dólares, segundo precio va a ser siete cincuenta, y este precio va a ser quinientos dólares. Uh, no tengo dirección, pero si quiere información, el teléfono es cinco seis uno nueve catorce cuarenta y tres treinta y tres. Y todos estos programas lo voy a poner en Facebook, en mi página de Facebook, si quieren más información. Okay?
Here, do, uh, April twenty-second American.
Oh, también para los que quieren ayudar a limpiar a su, a su comunidad, en abril veintidós, tenemos el, el, el gran, la gran limpieza americana. Sería de ocho de la mañana a las doce del día, y nos vamos a reunir delante del Public Works. La dirección es, uh, uno setenta y uno, eh, North Lake Avenue, la avenida North Lake. Este es en abril veintidós para limpiar. El cinco de mayo, va a ser el mayo seis, de una a cinco de la tarde, en la Marina de Pahokee, uno noventa, North Lake Avenue. El julio diecisiete, va a ser el, el yunting, la celebración del yunting, que va a ser para los, para los los que tienen de trece a dieciocho. Va a ser de tres de la tarde a ocho de la noche, en el parque MLK, que está en el cien este cinco calle. Y el próximo va a ser, uh, julio cuatro, la celebración de julio cuatro, de tres a ocho de la tarde, en el mar, la Marina de Pahokee, y la dirección es uno noventa, uh, North Lake Avenue. Esperamos verlo todos ustedes ahí.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mervin?
Um, just to, uh, just an announcement, first one is just the, I believe I can say this on behalf of the commission, that we give our condolences to the families of the tragic accident that's happened about a week or two ago. And so we just want to give our condolences to those families, um, that was, uh, tragically lost their lives, and also the, the other family also. And, uh, on tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow, no, on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, uh, you could join the Legends Breakfast, it's for all our senior citizens. Uh, it's gonna be here, it's gonna be at the gymnasium on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, from nine to eleven, to enjoy, uh, a free breakfast. So if you know any seniors that would like to participate, you just can bring them there, um, and so they can enjoy breakfast, and hopefully we can get our, uh, the bus to pick up our other seniors that was once in the program to bring them to the breakfast, and that again on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, from nine to eleven, here at the, uh, Pahokee Gymnasium.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion for adjournment, all business have been taken here?
It's too early, it's too early, is that for mine?
Can we get a motion, y'all?
So moved.
A motion for adjourn?
Second.
Have been moved by Commissioner Bowden, second by Vice Mayor Mervin, for the adjournment of the meeting. Call for question, here and now, ready for a vote, roll call.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
No, I'm ready to go.
Mayor Barr?
Yes. Meeting adjourned, thirty-nine, eighteen thirty-nine, record, new record.